As it is five thirty-two, I call the Breckenridge Planning Commission meeting of February the twentieth to order. So, does anyone have the comments on the minutes from last meeting?
Mr. Gerard?
Here.
Mr. Frechter?
Here.
Mr. Giller?
Here.
Here.
Ms. Proper?
Yeah.
Mr. Guerra?
Here.
It's a veggie burger. Any comments on the meetings from anyone, the minutes from anyone? Any corrections? Okay. So the minutes stand as approved as they are. Any changes to the agenda, Mark?
No, Mark, no changes.
Okay. I'm going to open the meeting to public comment on historic preservation issues that are not part of the agenda tonight. As part of a certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historic preservation issues in the community. With that, I'll open up the meeting to any public comment. Nobody is in the room, so if you are online, press star nine, and then press star six to unmute yourself. Anybody out there? Nobody cares. Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Anybody have a call up? I don't necessarily want to call it up, but I do have a couple of questions, just as I get fired up here. Ellie, is this yours, right? If you'd pull up your site plan? Okay, what is Lot One?
Um, so this is Lot One, this entire parcel?
What's meant by the little extension called Lot One?
Oh, this?
Yeah.
Um, that's an existing patio at the rear of the residence.
Okay.
The Lot One name just happened to fall within that square.
All right. And it's within the setbacks at the rear, and it's not changing anything? It just looked like it was being designated as something different?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the only question I had.
I've got one question. On thirteen A and R, it's for the snowstack. It says a twenty-five percent is required, but it's only seventeen percent. Is that correct?
Um, it should be twenty-five percent. Um, we, so the patio is not included in the snowstack area, which may be why the calculation looks a little different.
Oh, okay.
Um, but yeah, we calculated based off of the driveway.
It was sufficient, okay, because it said required was twenty-five, but the amount was only seventeen percent. So I just was...
I apologize, that must have been an issue in my staff report that I missed.
Okay, okay, all right, that's all I got. I have to say, I didn't, I was having trouble figuring out what the colors meant. There's no legend for the colors on this.
Ten set of drawings.
Yeah, yeah, it was difficult to follow those drawings.
It took me a while as well.
I was confused too.
I'm pretty good at planning.
I thought maybe it was just me.
And you couldn't look at the, like, you had two of the existing, and then you have to go to this one to look at the different and go back and forth.
Yeah.
It's nice to be put them next to each other for...
I hope the builder can...
I like this. Yeah.
So since we're discussing the plans, is there a requirement for before and after on elevations? Because there was no before and after on the elevations.
Right.
Not positive.
Yeah, I'm not sure either.
I mean, I could pick apart the plans for the next half hour, and I won't, but I did notice that, and I
Who's on this?
Actually drove up there this afternoon just to confirm what I was seeing on the plans.
And the bridge height is changing a bit. It's going up a couple of feet.
Yeah.
It has the bridge height on them. You go to a three-point-one.
And just a housekeeping thing, in your report, you do a proposed addition consistent of a large entryway, new bath, and new attached garage. There's no attached garage, and because of the color code, and it was, it took me a little bit of a while to go, okay, there is no garage.
So, um, it has a garage door, so it's like a garage storage area.
Ah, that's a...
Because that's the existing garage, and then there's a new garage storage area that's being added.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the new garage with all this good storage.
Thought you, Ellie, it's a...
And the new funky entrance. Oh, that's a front door.
You can move on.
No other questions? Okay. So, do we want to take a motion to approve this as it stands?
We don't have to.
Called anything, we just approved the consent calendar. Okay, we'll approve this consent calendar as it stands. And I think that brings us to the work session, Mark.
Yes. Ellie, will we take and lead?
All right. Yeah. So during a past planning commission meeting, a concern was brought up of various sheds and secondary structures not being maintained, and the staff inventoried them and created an interactive map. And then this was brought back to planning commission and then back to town council on the December twenty-sixth and February thirteenth meeting, where town council was supportive of code, the, of potential code changes. So the current town code only requires stabilization on locally landmarked properties, which of the inventoried sheds, only twenty-four percent were on landmarked properties. So staff proposes amending the existing stabilization section to include demolition by neglect provisions and extend the requirement to all historic structures within the town's period of significance. So this would affect roughly a hundred and sixty-eight properties and include two hundred and seventy-five different buildings rather than just the current landmarked forty-seven properties. Um, there are also several additional minor changes that are listed in the memo. And then, since the town council meeting on February thirteenth, there were some adjustments made to the wording based on suggestions by Breckenridge History. And staff additionally proposes doing a yearly walkthrough to monitor the condition of historic buildings and secondary structures, potentially with the help of Breckenridge History. And then additionally, there is the existing Priority Policy Twenty, which says that any alteration to a historic structure that causes it to drop a rating would result in a failure of that policy. Um, and then, an additional question for the planning commission in regards to the landmarking timeframe. Current town code defines an eligible landmark as something, as a structure that is at least fifty years old that meets the architectural, social, and physical criteria. Um, and staff would like the commission's input on whether that should be left as is or change the town's period of significance. Currently, there is one landmarked structure that is outside of the town's period of significance, but is over fifty years old. And the current code would allow the potential landmarking of ski chalets, which are over fifty years old and showcase an important piece of the town's history. Um, but a potential downside of the current code is it could allow the landmarking of building and building styles not preferred by the town and would provide a free basement density bonus to those buildings. An example of that may be the split-level malls, which would be eligible in a couple of years. And then finally, staff is working with the town attorney to add a penalty for demolition by neglect. And staff is also proposing extending the existing penalties, which are moratoriums on permitting, which currently only apply to landmarked properties. And staff proposes extending those to all historic properties.
Maybe just I'll add a couple of things with, to what Ellie said. Thank you, Ellie. We wanted to make sure that the council understood this is going to affect a number more properties than just the landmark. And in talking about our staff, like, not sure they really understand that we're quadrupling the number. I mean, we still think it's justified to do that because they're all historic properties, but we did want to make the council aware of the expanded scope of this. So that's just one thing I wanted to...
So, Mark, that's a potential of additional landmarks, correct?
Extra pro, no, extra, no, this is regarding
That's all of...
The requirement to, to avoid demolition by neglect. So, right now, it's only landmarked properties that we can hold them to that standard. Now we would expand it to...
Understand.
Yep. And then, the demolition criteria, I think Ellie just mentioned it, but we, that was also, it's enforcement and penalties, and we can withhold any permits for a period of one or five years, depending on severity of what they're doing. But we're also proposing to extend that to all historic properties and not just the landmark ones. So, we think that same vein makes a lot of sense. Regarding the period of significance, I think Ellie pointed out the pros and cons. The one obvious pro, if we keep it like it is, and I think that's why it is there, is it does allow someone to voluntarily, you know, we've had discussions about, and it's probably something we're going to come back to you guys with, I would think, in the next few months, is, you know, should we be changing our period of significance or be thinking about it? Because any property that's fifty years or older is potentially eligible. And, but we have set ours at nineteen forty-three as like the cutoff point, because it's all the mining era. And, so, but leaving the landmarking to fifty years or older gives us the opportunity for someone to potentially say, yeah, I'll voluntarily landmark my structure, maybe to get some re-basement density out of the deal, and maybe we're okay with that. As Ellie said, the flip side of that is, there may be some properties out there that we may not be enamored with, but I don't know, maybe split-level malls at some point. It's an architectural style that we look back and John Gunson and some of these architects from that time period, that's what they're doing. So, you know, we can't necessarily argue just because we may not love the design, that that's not appropriate to have some recognition. And then, let's see, I think that's the main, main things I just wanted to add on this. But we're certainly just looking for planning commission's thoughts on this and any other suggestions you might have. And we're available for questions.
So, would you like any of the commissioners to propose questions or do comments on the text that we see here?
Yeah, absolutely. Maybe questions to start, and then we can get into comments.
Okay. Susan, let's start with you.
Well, I'm new to this historic preservation concept. And I know that you just went through some of this, but I'm a little unclear on what the practical effect of going from period, period of significance versus fifty years is.
There's a lot of properties that could be eligible if we go to fifty years for landmarking.
Which it is currently at fifty years.
Yeah, yeah, excuse me, it's already there, so. We had, we had...
I think the idea would be to go back to the period of significance.
Yeah, it's more of just something that we're bringing to the commission's attention to kind of verify that this is still our goal and what we want to kind of move forward with. But it has the opportunity to change to the period of significance.
Uh-huh, okay. I think the rest of my, well, oh no, I have one other question. In the definition of stabilization, I was not clear on why you're proposing to take a repair or preservation and just saying that stabilization is providing weather protection and/or bracing. Wouldn't repair or preservation also be stabilization?
It could be. I need to find, can you say the page that's on, Susan?
It's on page four.
Page four, okay.
Part of...
Nine eleven-two, Mark.
Yeah. Part of it was just kind of rewording the stabilization definition, because we are expanding it really broadly. Like currently, it really only applies to landmarked properties, which are mostly primary structures that people are living in. And in expanding it to secondary structures, we may not have as strict of requirements, which is why we have the as approved by the town as wording in there, because many secondary structures don't even have a foundation. So having them add a foundation is like an excessive level that may be harder for them to achieve. Which, as far as the like repair or preservation, I think we went with weather protection and ensuring like structural integrity are kind of more broad that imply kind of the repair.
Bracing to me just sounds like you're kind of holding it up as opposed to, you know, taking more...
Yeah, well, so stabilization really, that's the intent, is to keep the building standing. It's not to restore or even preserve. So, for example, we looked at the siding last time. Stabilization would not be to that extent. That would be like historic preservation at that point, is to make sure that that siding is, you know, as much of it as preserved as possible, and then we splice in similar materials and that.
Like our discussion.
Stabilization is really keeping the building from collapsing. So bracing it, making, I think making sure there's a roof on it's really important. Drainage is another aspect of that.
Probably importance number one is to maintain the roof membrane, because that will determine what the walls and everything else are doing or not doing.
Yeah. And then drainage as well. But, so it's really, and I think realistically, there's, you know, there's only so much we're going to be able to tell property owner, you know. We, you can't, I don't think we can apply this requirement to say you have to restore this to exactly what it looked like. What we want to make sure is the building doesn't collapse. You know, we're mainly talking about sheds here. Although it does, would apply to primary structures as well, but we don't have that issue here in town, really, with the primary residences. It's the sheds that are where we're seeing some deterioration.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's all we want them to do is to hold them up?
Hold them up, have a roof that's, you know, going to keep the, keep the elements out and have good drainage around it.
Yeah. And like, if they want to do more, they're more than welcome to. It's more of us just being like, this is the minimum.
Okay.
And we had, you know, we debated, Ellie mentioned it a little bit about foundation even taking it out, because it seems like it's a stretch. Breck History suggested we leave it in, and I think it gives us the ability, if we really have a situation where there is a foundation that's failing, something like that, where we can possibly require that, but that would be a stretch too, because then you're talking about a significant investment in a lot of cases when you're talking about doing that.
Okay. All right, I think the other points I have are comments, not questions.
Mike?
So, totally supported, think it's smart, part of the cultural landscape. But with respect to questions, could we unpack number two a little bit? The period of significance to nineteen forty-three is clear. And Ellie, Peter ran us through a bunch of pictures of houses, and we looked for significance in post-World War II construction, really seventies and eighties construction. I don't know, Steve, you were here for that. I don't know if anyone else was. The, you know, to paraph, or to summarize that, there was some sense that the early ski resort history has merit and could be a period of significance at some point. That, you know, that's a process with the chapeau and all that. But is there, here's my question. Is there, is there a way to use the fifty-year rule, but keep it tied to the seven aspects of integrity? Location, setting, significance, association, I can't remember the other ones, so that we don't get all the junk, but we get the ones that are worthwhile or have merit?
That is the way that it currently is, that it, for it to be eligible, it has to be at least fifty years old. And then it also has like a long list of architectural, social, and geographical significance that it has to potentially meet.
And I think those are straight from the secretaries. Yeah.
So, what, here's my question. Should we clarify question number two? To include, somehow include significance, so it's not mistaken as a blanket of application to every fifty-year-old building? Would that be a motion or, it's just a work session?
Yeah, so we could take your comment on that when we do that point.
With, with regards to that, what is the council, the current council's perspective on this issue of the nineteen forty-three versus the fifty-year? What's their leaning?
We haven't had that discussion yet, specifically at council level. We've, we did hear a couple of comments from council members about losing that chalet to scrape up there on Wellington, which I think everyone's a little disappointed about. We've heard from Breck History recently that they're interested in looking at it. I think the one thing, Mike, it's probably been seven, eight years since we did that exercise. There's probably a lot more structures now that if we were to come back and take a look at, that would now qualify under the fifty years, and it'd be interesting to see that. So, when I was suggesting earlier that we might look at this later this year, I think it's about time to do that again, just to
Good idea.
Yeah, take a look at that and see.
So what I'm hearing from you is that we'll weigh in on it, and Breck History will weigh in on it, and then council will take a look at what everybody's perspective is.
Yeah, and it's just, you know, I mean, it's separate from this, but if we're going to change the period of significance, you know, it's going to affect property owners, a number of them. And so that obviously, you know, has to be something that ultimately the council is willing to, you know, accept in terms of, you know, they're going to be limiting the ability to do additions or any type of, you know, revisions to those structures. Yeah, so it's not, not a step that's taken lightly. Yeah.
That is a big issue nationally. But there's also the recognition, recognition that a lot of modern architecture is significant. Doesn't necessarily mean everyone loves it, but there are a lot of beautiful buildings built in the last half of the twentieth century. What?
Because we joke about this, I probably told Mike before, but when we were in Philadelphia, they're, they're only worried about their colonials. They don't even care about their Victorians. They're thinking about stuff from the seventeen hundreds. Yeah. Yeah. And that's probably a little narrow-minded of a view of things, you know, when you've got so much else.
Perspective on the East Coast, though. Certainly isn't Washington. I think it is in Virginia, Pennsylvania. I suspect it is in New York as well.
Mike pretty much asked the question that I had. I, I, I've long wondered about the fifty-year designation. It's a moving target, but in some ways it doesn't make sense to me. I mean, heck, some of the houses I've built are going to soon be eligible. And that bothers me. But that said, it sounds as if the staff supports keeping it as the fifty years as opposed to the period of significance. Is that correct?
Yes.
Why?
Gives us the opportunity to, for some interesting building, for example, like that, you know, Mike was alluded to, there's some good, you know, newer buildings that are out there, including ski area chalets or stuff like that, that we could get a landmarking in one of those voluntarily. And landmarking is, is, is a voluntary process. That's the way it's written in our code. The landowner has to come in and do that. And so, we see landmarkings happening in two ways. One is it's owned by the town, and so the town's made the commitment to landmark it. Or number two, it's owned by a private citizen, and almost in every case, they're coming in for a development permit. They want to do an addition or something on the back. They want to put a basement underneath it. It's the quid pro quo. They get that, we get the landmarking designation.
The reason I've, I've been uncomfortable with it for years is it seems that it muddies the water. Historical significance, fifty years doesn't feel historically significant to me. I am, maybe it's because I'm denying my age, but I'm just throwing that out.
The ski area
Question.
This, the ski area is historic now, and so...
But they tore down the Bergy, so...
Don't we have a duty to maintain some of those unique things from the early skiers? Maybe just, maybe we can look at moving the year to, you know, like somewhere in the seventies? I don't know if they considered that. Sorry to jump in on the topic. I know it's not my question.
And I, when I'm asked this question, I, I really, I thought about this a lot today, and I didn't come up with any answers in, in my head. I was just, I don't quite understand it. So I'm looking for staff to explain that, what was the thinking of fif, I mean, I guess I hear what you're saying, Mark, but...
Fifty, fifty years is the standard established in the, in the National Park Secretary Interior Standards. So anything that's fifty years or older can be eligible.
That's a great answer. That, that makes sense to me, then.
So when that was established, the big preservation movement was in the sixties on the following urban renewal and in all the demolition. Like the arch grounds in Saint Louis were about ninety acres, and they leveled the most historic part of Saint Louis because it was considered urban renewal.
Yeah.
And, and so, a lot of that evolved. Then there were the famous landmark cases like Penn Station being leveled, the train station, which is a beautiful stone bozart building for Madison Square Garden, which is no one's idea of an attractive building. And so, there were, there were a lot of lawsuits and legislation that led up to that. But at the time, it was roughly considered to be a traditional architecture pre-World War II versus modern architecture post-World War II. But as time marches on, and there was a lot of debate at the time, should it be twenty-five years? Should it be fifty years? Should it be seventy-five years? But as time marches on, it's a, it is debated around the country about, gee, is a building from the seventies significant or justifiably historic? And I think the answer is it depends if it meets one of the seven aspects of integrity. And so, the Berghoff, you're absolutely right.
Bergenhoff.
What?
Bergenhoff.
Yeah, Bergenhoff was one of the most significant buildings, I think, in a lot of ways, especially in terms of Breck. I also think Harry Teague's Riverwalk Center is an important building. And I know some people don't like how the bathrooms function in that building, but Harry, but Harry Teague's a big deal, and that's a beautiful building. That's one I could see the town landmarking at some point. Mark mentioned that gorgeous Swiss chalet house on Wellington that just sold for a couple mil. And I looked at the pictures and inside and out, I mean, inside that, that house had Swiss chalet furniture. I mean, that house had more integrity than all of us combined. So, another one is the Trollhagen across from the market. Just, I think that Swiss chalet one has merit. I'd love to see that saved. But there, there aren't a lot of examples of post-World War II architecture. There's some beautiful houses, but in terms... There's some beautiful houses, but um, in terms of public architecture, there's Breck is a little lacking in that. So the ones that do exist, uh, there should be some efforts to, to try and help the owners protect those.
So to further my question, um, so I understand, so if, if I buy, if I, if I buy a, a house today that's forty years old, I've got no restrictions on it as far as historical, and then it turns fifty. Can the town then tell me that I have all these restrictions on it?
No.
Should, should choose to modify.
Yeah, so, so through this exercise, no. Only if you voluntarily came in and said, I want to landmark my property because it just turned fifty years old.
That's how I thought it.
We'll probably have a discussion later this year about the bigger issue of should that period of significance change from forty three to include newer, you know, things that are fifty years old? If that happened, then yes, that could be on the table, but that's a discussion for another day. But I think it was good to get it out on the table today. So when we talk about it again, we'll all have a little bit of
Well, that's the problem that I have with it. I've, I've always had with it. It's like, wait a minute. You can buy a piece of property and then all of a sudden that, that, that you can do whatever you want with and then ten years down the line, you're forced into a situation.
Yeah, well, and the other thing is we'd have to have discussions about is it, would it just apply within the historic district?
Right.
Would we go outside? So, yeah, there's a, there'd have to be a lot of steps on that. Before we get to that point.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Good questions.
So Mike is right. We had these conversations early on in my career with Planning Commission. And one of the things that we talked about is the difference between the fifty years and the periods of significance and whether a town would have two periods of significance. My, that's my recollection that we talked about that and concluded that, well, yeah, we think it could. So my question leading up to that is, there's other towns that are like us, Telluride, Crested Butte, probably Steamboat Springs. Have we reached out to them at all to see what they're doing about demolition by neglect, number one? Number two, how are they viewing this period of significance from the mining era and from the ski era? Because they are different for those. And if we haven't done that, I think to make work for Ellie, that would be, that would be a good contact to make to talk about how they're viewing this issue.
I, as far as the period of significance, we were very preliminary about this. We haven't talked to any other communities about that. But um, for demolition by neglect, I did research code examples of that and found some from several other cities and towns within Colorado and was looking into that.
When, when we had one of our ski town forums, I remember Crested Butte was having a real problem
Extra.
With the demolition by neglect and just rubbing their hands with glee, waiting for to be able to tear down some of the historic properties in order to rebuild some new monstrosity. And that was a big point of concern, I don't know, three, four years ago.
If I remember that conversation, people were waiting up to the forty ninth year and then jumped in and did the demo so that they wouldn't fall into that category. Is that what you remember?
As well, as well as real historic, they're much older than that, that were really falling apart and, and were historic, but not.
I guess just as a point of information, Crested Butte did, I think is it their clompus plan, a new comprehensive plan for their community, um, has identified a changing of their period of significance as a goal for their preservation. So that, I don't know more than that. That's all I know.
Anything else, Steve? No comments, not questions.
Um, I guess I have a question about the providing weather protection, why we don't say in there to um, provide, uh, ensure longevity for siding. And you also talk about, um, and maybe add something about drainage around it, because I was just thinking, we looked at that little house in town and they, they were saying that the bottom of it was rotting out because they didn't have proper drainage away from it. So if we could work something like that into it, I think that would be beneficial. It's not really a question though. I guess, have you considered that?
I thought about it earlier today and was like, oh, that's probably something we should add for drainage. So we'll definitely consider that.
Yeah, and the siding to me is, is to me the most historical, because that's what you see as someone walking around and it, there's nothing mentioned in here of maintaining it, you know, like it needs to be painted so it doesn't deteriorate. Yeah, I like, um, I guess that's all I have for questions.
So Ellie, could you remind me out, out of this expansion, quadrupling the size of these buildings, these structures, how many of them are in a state of, what percentage of those would you say are currently in a state of neglect? I know your last report, there was like, the, the two worst categories, who, that would probably need immediate work.
Yeah, so there are two that are in the worst condition of like potentially not being maintained at all.
Okay.
And are in danger of collapse. And then I believe there's somewhere around twelve
Okay.
that are poorly maintained.
So, so there'd be about fourteen, fifteen, that would be immediate financially, have a financial immediate financial impact if this were to, this code were to be changed.
Yeah, um, which is like part of the, another um facet of this that we're working on as a grant program to help those.
Yeah, that was, the, the next one is, has the town council talked about um, a financial assistant program to support this?
We haven't yet. We are still working on getting some information together for that and we'll be bringing it to a town council meeting soon.
We did this briefly touch on it with the council. Um, and I don't know if frankly, we'd have to look if all the poor condition, you know, the ones that aren't falling apart, if they would all fall under where we would be out there saying, you need to, you know, stabilize this today. We still have to look at that a little, a little closer, but Breck history is gonna be helping us manage that process so they could work with the property owner and a contractor to come up with the solution. And then we're gonna propose some type of grant program and probably what it would be is let's throw some money at these two projects right now that we know are falling apart.
Okay.
Um, this summer, and then over the next three years, let's try to fund those other twelve um, and work with the property owners. Um, I think what we did hear from council is there needs to be some skin in the game from the property owners as well. So I, I, maybe it's a fifty fifty match. I don't know what that looks like yet, but um, it would, it would not just be all on the town's dime. We'd wanna have the property owners putting something into it also. Did hear back, I think from at least one of those property owners like, yeah, I'd like to do something. Yeah, it'd be nice if I had some help financially to do it.
And then the next thing is, you know, just uh following on with what Mike and Ethan raised, so the so land, so from, so from what I understand, landmarking, a, a owner requesting landmarking status, the granting of the landmark status is not necessarily automatic. And it has to meet this criteria with the seven aspects of integrity. Is that, is that correct? Who is, who judges? Who determines, is that town council? Is that, uh, is that your department? Is that us?
We do, and um, we'll do an evaluation of that and then we'll do a report to the council and he has to go through readings with the council.
Okay, got it.
We make that recommendation too.
Yes, if it, if it's a project, thanks, Steve, that's a great point. If it's a project that's going through process and um, they're gonna get pre-basement density, well then the landmarking is part of your um, staff report and you guys will actually weigh in, like Steve said, and said, yes, we recommend this for landmarking eligibility.
And in those packets, when we have that, and we haven't had many recently, but I think you would have been involved in, but over the years we've had several. The staff shows the findings, we think under uh, section A one, it meets this criteria. And we've even amended the criteria that we think the landmarking
Okay.
fits. And we make a recommendation to the council
Okay.
that they approve the landmark.
So when city market comes for landmark status, we can weigh in on that.
Can, we can, we can find it social, you know.
Only three years away. I, I, I have a continuation of my question. This has been rattling around in my brain all day. And I'm, I apologize for being thick. Why are you asking us this question? I don't understand why I'm being asked. Does the commission believe the timeframe within the landmarking section should be based on fifty years or older or the town's period of significance? Should, it seemed to me it should have been I'm sorry, I'm, I, am I thick?
Um, it was more just the staff going through the existing code as we like work through these demo by neglect changes and looking at that and just kind of verifying that's still where we're at. I mean, for the most part, all of the properties we landmark are within the town period of significance. So I feel like a lot of people forget that it, you can landmark something outside of the town's period of significance currently. And so we just wanted to verify with the commission that the fifty years is still kind of what we're thinking and what our intention is.
I guess what I'm saying, like
Excuse me, we, we debated it a little bit ourselves internally. We talked about the pros and cons and so then based on that, we kind of thought, well, let's just confirm that with the planning commission as well.
Okay, it, and I'm sorry again, it's been rattling around in my brain all day. I'm like, well, wait, is there a problem with it? Is that why we're proposing to change it?
We're not proposing to change it. It's fifty years right now. We're not proposing to change that.
I think number two could be
Right, right.
A little clarified a bit and, and they will. Um, but just for, to continue that discussion, what might be landmarked in the town that's not, that's after nineteen forty three?
And currently, one, one, two, South Harris Street was built in nineteen forty nine and that's a landmarked property.
That like across from the, the
Yeah.
Oh, it's that little log. Is that Tim's?
Lynn is the Gallagher residence. He landmarks two right next to each other.
Next to Tim's.
Yeah. Yeah, that, I remember that. Uh, like here's another example, um, they're looking at, or the park service and other historic districts are looking at um, the cultural landscapes, uh, what's worth preserving um, there. It could be um, an old statue. It could be the first ski lift in Breck. I don't know if that still exists. When I go up the sixth chair in the T-bar, I, it does occur to me that those have historic significance. I, I know they suck in some ways.
What's that? The seat chair?
The seat chair, I don't even go there. But um, you know, it is worth a look as the, the town considers this as to the sort of non buildings that, that might also be worth uh, uh, being stewards of.
And we, and that's in here, included in here still, um, because basically we're carrying over that National Park.
Yeah.
Language.
So there's landmark, landmark sites, historic districts and cultural landscape districts as one section. So all of those
Sure.
have the potential to be created within Breckenridge.
That's great. Thank you.
So how about the orange beetle? I think it needs to stay there forever.
Notice his West failure has gone.
Um, another example are historic signs. Did you go to that? The, there was, at Saving Places, they had a discussion on historic signs. It was pretty interesting. I don't know that there's a lot of those in the town, but murals can fall in, in that too.
I have a couple of comments.
Yeah, or questions.
Questions.
Make it a question.
Okay, I'll save my comments for afterwards.
Just change the inflection of the comment. That little high pitched thing at the end makes it a question.
Okay, we start at this end with comments.
Comments and answers to your questions include in that too. So, um, the uh, so my one comment is I think before these code changes are voted on and approved and put in motion, I think that I would recommend to town council, they also have the financial assistant program in place. Otherwise, I, I would expect there'd be, there might be a lot of backlash. Um, so I support the code changes. Now I, thanks to this work session, I am now comfortable with the rolling fifty years. As long as there is that review process, um, that meets the seven aspects of integrity. I, I keep thinking of some movie, there's some some joke about that. And then, uh, yes, I agree about extending the penalties. Because that way there's both a carrot and a stick, so it doubles the incentive to make this happen.
All right, I'll go next. Um, does the commission support proposed code changes? Mostly, few changes, like the protect the siding and the drainage. Uh, I think the rolling fifty years is nice. I do think they should look at changing the period of significance, maybe two periods of significance, but that's not asked here. It's providing my opinion on that outside of it. Uh, and I'm fine with question three too.
I do support the code changes uh, with the addition, as Elena said, tightening up some of that. To be as inclusive of the things that go wrong resulting in the demolition by neglect. Uh, I think it's helpful to the people who are applying the code to their building, what it is they need to do to keep it uh, in as good a condition as possible. Uh, two, I think the fifty years is there for a reason. Mike has pointed out many of those reasons and I feel comfortable that this planning commission, at least as far as the town of Breckenridge is concerned, and the town council can think about whether a building is historic or not and can make those decisions to not allow bad properties to get landmarked. But I think that there are certainly things that are outside of our period of significance as it's now declared that are well worth saving and landmarking. And ex- extending the penalties, yes, absolutely. And as Alan has indicated, the stick and the carrots always the best way to go forward with this. Um, maybe to quote Elaine from past, a past meeting, um, most of the people who own these properties have the wherewithal to protect them, I think. This is, this is Breckenridge and there's hardly a square foot of property that isn't extremely valuable and people have the ability to do that, but still, I think, being able to say we support it with our money, uh, helps us, us justify putting that on us on the people that own those properties.
Thank you, Ellie, um, and everybody else for clearing up my questions that were rattling around in my brain. I feel much more comfortable with it now. So, um, I do support the proposed code changes. Um, and after the discussion, on number two, I am, I believe the timeframe should stay at the fifty years and not go to the on number two, I am, I believe the timeframe should stay at the fifty years and not go to the town's period of significance. And I do support extending the existing penalties. Thank you.
Yes, I do support the proposed code changes. Very nice work, Mark and Ellie. A period of significance, it's a, it's a tough one. I do think the town needs to start sort of the understanding and education and interpretation of the early ski resort days in the, in the nineteen sixties. I could see some limited landmarking of significant structures in that period and, you know, granting those owners the, the benefits of that. And then, yes, we absolutely should extend this to all historic buildings or sheds in the period of significance if we really seek to be stewards. Thanks.
Okay, I, I do support the proposed code changes and I now that we've discussed the fifty years, I, I do support keeping that. On the extending the existing penalties. Well, first of all, I think Alan's right that we need to have the carrot at the same time that we have the stick. But I, I think that the penalty needs to be a sufficient deterrent. And I would wanna see what that's gonna be. I, I assume we don't have a concept yet on that, but you know, we don't want people to, you know, just continue to let this happen. We want to encourage them to do the right thing here. On, and then I had one suggestion. Just a wording suggestion on the definition of demolition by neglect. It's, it seemed to me that two words were missing. So words talking about maintenance repaired to a point. I would add at which the lack of maintenance reaches a threshold.
Yeah.
Agreed.
That's it.
I agree with number one. And I agree with number three. However, with the caveat that has been discussed, that Alan brought up, that we have some incentive. And that's a probably a town council issue. And number two, I wrestle with a little bit and I think that Mike's discussion about the history of this whole process. Those of us who are older remember what happened during the sixties. And I watched it happen in Washington DC where urban renewal came through and developers tore, tore down entire neighborhoods. They tore down the entire city of Rockville and all the historic buildings that were in it. And I could go on and on with examples of that that happened all up and down the east coast. And it was an important movement when people said, wait a minute, we're losing something significant here to our history. And it was not, it didn't come as a tremendous hardship to the developers who then learned to incorporate these historical elements into what they were doing. And as a result of that, we ended up with some really nice historic buildings preserved. In Washington, we have some historic facades that were preserved and buildings were built behind those facades to accommodate the need for office space and residential space and the whole problem, once they went back to the drawing board, so to speak, turned out to be a big benefit because of the push for historic preservation. So I think it's, it's really important that we take this into consideration in the context of what we're trying to consider here. And the, the fifty years versus the period of significance, the period of significance is, is kind of it's kind of arbitrary because we don't have a definition of that. But I think that those, that terminology along with the understanding of, of the importance of the history of this place can be perhaps a, a foundation for making future decisions and refining this definition at some point in the future to a better understanding of everybody that needs to deal with us.
Just a couple of things to Alan's and a couple of other your points. We're gonna bring this to the town council on, I think, March twelfth. We're also gonna at the same time bring that grants program to them. So we hope that by the time probably before this is adopted, we'll know what we're gonna do with those grants and hopefully we'll have something available so we can have both the carrot and the stick there at the same time. So, and then secondly, I just wanted to recognize Ellie's done an exemplary job on this and just lots of good research, so.
Mark, I have one, one question that just came up as, as we're talking. The current restrictions on demo. I go back to the project that we looked at last time. That little shed house, whatever that thing was. And as I look at it, that building is, is really in a difficult place. Because financially, there's not the motivation to preserve it because the owner's going to have to put too much money into it. If they sell it, the purchaser is also gonna have to put a huge amount of money into it. So sometimes I think that the good judgment of the town needs to be, we need, we need to let somebody who has a good plan to create something there that resembles the history would be able to demo that before it completely goes away. Because it doesn't have a lot of historic significance, other than the fact that it's been there.
Yeah, that's, that's a tough one. I think our criteria still meets that significance, but I, I totally understand what you're saying in terms of the financial challenges there. And, you know, I thought where you were gonna go and what I kind of think of is maybe there's some places like that where we need to talk about extending the grant program at some time to for situations like that. I don't know.
But the grant would be really significant, like in excess of a million dollars. And I don't see the town doing that.
No, you're right.
That's, that's the point I'm making. When it gets to the point where the financial investment is prohibitive for either the existing owner or somebody to buy it, then what does the town do with this thing that's going to sit there? And, and you know, eventually it's gonna tran, transfer hands because, you know, that woman may pass and pass the property back to her kids, but still the problem doesn't go away. And I'm just bringing it up, not because I'm asking for a solution, but I'm trying to point out a potential problem that the town and the regulations may end up wrestling with in the future as we try to be cognizant of historic preservation.
I have to say something. I think a property like that has huge historic significance because it shows the transformation of something into a living dwelling during a period of time where times were hard. So I, I respectfully, like, totally have the opposite view of you on that place. I think the people who own it don't realize how much of a gem it is historically. And maybe if they're not in the financial position to maintain it or at least keep the side protected, then they need to let it go to someone else who does.
I would say, I, I, I think what Mark was getting at, and I will echo it. Because we were discussing this, that property. Because where it sits, it's theoretically worth a lot of money. But it's not really, because anybody who, they can't afford, it doesn't make financial sense for them to restore it. And, and selling it, who's gonna buy that? What can you, what kind of return can you get out of it?
I think there's, I think there are people out there for how much you can add up and then add below, hire Janet, I forget her last name. I think someone would make it, someone would go for it.
I, I think we could debate that for quite a while. So we, that's not our place to do that here, but, but it, but I think the point is that it's, it's, it's on that line there. It's like, where is that property on that? And Elaine, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not poo-pooing your, your, your historic significance. It's just something that I've wrestled with. I think it's part of what I was wrestling with all day is, you know, is, is these historic properties. I, I, I understand the significance. I understand the importance of, of preserving them. But as a builder and, and, and somebody doesn't have a lot of money, I look at that and I go, if I owned it. So I, I take your point, Mark. It's like, where does that stand there?
Well, I look at those things in terms of the real estate and the investment and all that, because that's what I've done all my life. And it doesn't make sense from that standpoint. And I walked away from that saying, I wonder what's gonna happen to this building because it's not clear that anyone would buy it and put that money into it. It's very clear to me that these people are not going to move forward to do anything other than what they've done is replacing the roof. And I don't know what's gonna happen to the siding. But I don't think that they are in a financial position to do anything with it. So it's just troubling. And, and I just throw that out there because ultimately, a property that is not clearly restorable from a practical and a financial standpoint is in a really bad position to just further decay. And we can require maintenance to an extent so that we don't have demolition by neglect. But we can't fight the, the financial, unless the town's gonna come in and buy it and spend taxpayer money to restore it. It's probably gonna sit there and further decay.
I'd also like to add to your comment. Elaine. You're, you're saying that it has significant historical significance because it's a it, it was a dwelling that was changed into a living, however you put that, is that part of the actual criteria? We can think it or feel it. You can feel one way and I can feel another, but we all always have to go back to what is written about what makes something historically significant. It's not, it's not.
Apparently you're saying size. You're saying size.
Not at all. I'm not saying size at all.
I mean, it seems like the size of it is the reason why you guys are thinking that it's not worth its value.
Economically viable.
Yeah.
It's not financially viable.
Well, many things of historic restoration are not economically viable.
And so the argument here, if it's an argument, is for, for a property owner or a potential property owner. Is somebody going to, to purchase that? Let's, let's throw out some numbers. What is the property worth as it sits? A million?
How much do you think they've rented it for every month since the sixties?
That's not the point.
I think they've put back into it.
But, but that's not the point. That's, that's history.
Chuck and Financial, you opened the door there, dude. So they've got cash flow coming in.
Right, but they don't have the money to fix it.
How do you know that?
We don't know that, but.
I think, I think they do.
Okay, so.
Guy was a skier in the sixties.
Okay.
And then he joined some big ski.
All of this because we don't know. What I'm saying is, and I think what, what Mark was saying, and then one of the things that's troubled me for years, okay, so let's say for, as a if they have the money or they get somebody to back them, then it's worth it because they ha, they bought it for a song years ago and they've got the equity. They've got equity. But if they don't and they have to sell it, I do the numbers in my head. How many square feet is that thing? Nine hundred? What was it?
Five hundred.
They can go up to, with a basement, they can go up to sixteen hundred square feet.
Sixteen hundred square feet times divided, uh, uh, how much is it gonna cost to bring that property up to standard? It's, 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 it's gonna cost, how much are you gonna buy it for? You know, a, a few million divided by sixteen hundred is an astronomical per, per square footage thing. So, and, and we can go around and around on all this. I think that the point is that I think that was what Mark was saying is to our, there's this point where the economic balance does, is, is it balanced? Is that, is that basically what you're saying?
And the only party that can step into that situation is a municipality
That's right.
That wants to spend taxpayer dollars to preserve or restore that. And that's my point. And I think that, that that's something we need to be mindful for because properties like that are just kind of done.
Fortune for that right now. And I guarantee, I guarantee they don't wanna sell it until they pass because they don't wanna pay the capital gains on it. And then when the daughter gets it, she'll decide financially, based on where she is, what she'll do with the property. This is what happens over and over and over. And there are so many properties in this country and I think it's a huge problem with our tax system is that people do not sell properties because they don't wanna pay the capital gains. So they wanna wait for their kids to inherit and then it gets piped out.
It gums up, real estate transactions, stock sales, it, it slows the economy. So slightly more relevant.
Thank you, Mike.
What protection is there for that house? I know that this spoke to sheds, but let's, let's use that house as a test case because I'm learning. What protection is there for that house currently from demolition by neglect?
Currently, there's nothing. I mean, they.
Historic structure.
Well, if this, if this passes, then, then there'd be that.
Well, this says shit currently in secondary structures.
No, so if you look at nine eleven seven, it's demolition by neglect standards for all structures. So it would apply to all historic structures. But I'm currently, as the code stands, I, there's nothing that would prevent it from demolition by neglect, but we have a whole demolition criteria if they like wanted to come in for a demolition permit, which is not likely for them to be granted one, but there is criteria.
Yeah, okay, that's helpful and reassuring.
We focus on sheds because that's primarily where the problem is. But you're right, that, this is, that's one of the examples of where you could have demo by neglect on the primary residence.
Right.
Can we put something in that says mansard roofs that extend below the up top floor will never be considered historically significant?
From the seventies.
You know, it's former planning director Peter Grossich used to say, you know, some of these buildings are hard to love.
At the risk of fueling more fires, but I don't remember exactly when we did this property, but Michael remember it. It was a very small home. And by the time we were all done with it, the house was lifted up, full basement underneath, underground connector to another full property and they literally quadrupled the amount of space that they had out of that project. And that was not a cheap project. I mean.
Lost from the community side of the library, isn't it?
In that area. I don't remember who did it or what they called it.
Touring, it's like, wait, there's a whole house upstairs here and you can only get it to it through the basement or walking outside.
Right next to the French Street parking lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Underground connector, full basement, all the way through to under two houses and where there is a will, there is a way.
Well, I've said that many times. Where there's a big pocketbook, there's a.
And now maybe becoming more current and relative to this. If you didn't listen to the two keynote speakers at the Saving Places conference, they really opened up the, the question of a robust discussion about period of significance, the fifty-year rule, whether a property was disqualified because it had been subsequently altered more than they thought it should have been altered. And we're proposing that there be a real thought process go into how we decide a property is historically significant or not and whether it can be landmarked. And you can go back and listen to those two speakers and it was really interesting and thought provoking.
Where would we do that?
Yeah, how do we define that?
They'll post, they'll have all the presentations on the website.
Oh, from the.
places.
Okay.
And you'll be able to go on, log in and see them.
And you'll be able to go on, log in and see them.
Just in Boulder or the year before?
When we just in Boulder, this year.
What was the name of the session? Do you remember?
It were the both, the two keynote speakers in the morning each time, yeah.
It's a good point, Steve. It's worth watching. Maybe send a link. You think I can look into it? Yeah, I think that would.
We usually, if you go to Saving Places, sometime after that, they will say, send you something that says the sessions are now available.
I think they've done that already.
That's if you register. I don't know if you can access them.
Have your registration number to go in and look at it. But if somebody didn't register, we could share our registration number and you could look at it.
Yeah, I'll look into it and.
And they do that because, you know, sometimes during one session, there's three things you wanted to go see. Pick one and you can go back and see the other ones.
An interesting discussion.
Yes.
Any other comments? Do you have the, uh?
Yes, I do.
Love to hear it.
All right, um. Lighting code amendments, uh, to get more towards dark sky compliance, those went through with passing colors. See, um, not a lot else. Um, Ellie, we did bring demo by neglect. We already talked about that. So the main, main topic of the night for most of the meeting was BGB. So we actually brought a draft development agreement um, for BGB to the meeting that we had been working on with the applicants and their attorneys, et cetera. Um, and, um, we, uh, Chris and I actually met with many of the council members individually prior to the meeting. Um, want, just one on one to explain it because there's so much packed into that development agreement. Um, that, um, we knew we'd have a real difficulty if we just took questions at the meeting. We'd never get anywhere. So we were able to get a lot of things clarified ahead of time, which helped us. We actually moved through the whole thing. And at the end of the evening, the council supported moving forward with a number of revisions that I'll talk about in a minute. But I think you guys know the overall plan. Nothing happening to speak of on the North Gondola Lot. Going to have, uh, except parking and some drainage improvements. Um, we're going to have the housing, uh, forty eight units, um, on the North Gold Rush Lot. Uh, along with parking. South Gold Rush Lot will have sixteen duplex units. Up at parcel four, the old admin site, old East Peak Eight Hotel, that's where the big hotel condos in, over two hundred SFEs up there. And then parcel five is, um, two single families at the end of four o'clock Run Road and parcel six is the extension of Timber Trail. Um, four, up to fourteen single family residence subdivision up there. High priced real estate area. Um, so, and then finally there's a seventh parcel and that's the Entrada. And, um, the way it's working is Mike Dudik is proposing that there's employee mitigation that he's required to offset for the number of employees generated up at the hotel condo site. And he's proposing that he would provide the housing that's associated with that, which ma- basically says that you have to provide housing for thirty five percent of the employees generated for these formulas. Um, and that's going to be, he's going to do that at the Entrada site. And so we're allowing him to transfer some density to Entrada from the overall project to make up the difference between the natural density that's sitting on Entrada today and what he wants to get to. Um, and so that's the other moving piece in this. So anyway, that's all, um, the Entrada piece is going to start running separately. Um, and we're going to have our first work session on it next Tuesday. Where we're going to go back to the old deal points and start going through them. A lot of them go away now because there's, it's a different situation than before. Um, before he was talking about getting credits so, um, for housing that he could from these units and he could apply those credits to different projects that he did, or he could sell them to someone else. It was kind of a speculative thing he was doing before. Now this is going to be in direct response to doing the mitigation.
That'll be a hundred percent of that building.
More than likely. There may be a little bit leftover mark, but we, we're still going to figure that out. They're, they're going through the design and that right now. Now, the forty eight units on the, um, on North Gold Rush, that's like gravy. That's an extra public benefit that Mike is providing for the community and that's something the council wanted. So, um,
Are those units going to be, um, used for Vail Resorts or for general? Uh, I mean, are they going to be workforce housing for the whole community?
Uh, the, the ones at North Gold Rush are likely to be for Vail Resorts because Vail has indicated, you know, they're part, a partner to this whole deal. And so they've told Mike, yeah, we need and want and are willing to participate, whatever. So, uh, yeah, so. Um, some of the specifics that they went through, because you guys will be seeing this, um, real soon after the development agreement is approved, you'll probably be seeing master plan amendments for both down here, the Gondola Lots, North Gold Rush Lots Master Plan, and then for the Peak Seven and Eight Master Plan. That'll set the stage then for the individual parcel, um, developments. Um, but, um, so there, there's a number of things in there that we can go over in more detail, but, um, some of the things that came up at the meeting is not receiving negative points for land use on the North Gold Rush Lot. It's not intended for parking type uses. Um, but that's what it's been for a number of years. Council agreed, okay, it's, we don't need to assign more negative points. It was assigned negative points and was turned into a parking lot many years ago. And we're not increasing that intensity. Um, we had assigned negative points to it previously because it was going to be a parking structure. It was going to even increase the amount of parking that occurred there. Um, that's one thing that came up. Uh, electric shuttles are another that Mike agreed to. Both from, um, the shuttles that run, that will run from the North Gold Rush Lot over to the, um, transit center in the Gondola. That will bring people that are parking there over, as well as, um, shuttles that will be operating, additional shuttles that will be operating to bring guests up at, um, parcel four, the admin site down into town. So he's committing to do some electric there. Um, let's see, the council really wanted to see, um, nonprofits and NRO somehow address. NRO is the emphasis. They've had a problem finding housing for NRO. I think last year the solution they, they worked out with Vail was getting them in Breck Terrace.
Right.
But that's not a guarantee from year to year. It's, it's been an ongoing issue. So they're really asking for some type of commitment to, if you got, you know, especially like these units over here on North Gold Rush, if they're seasonally occupied by ski area staff, can you make some available in the, in the slow season for, uh, you know, the NRO? And, um, so that's, that's something the council's asked for. They're still working on. Um, one of the things Mike is looking for in regards to the North Gold Rush Lot is the ability to use non-natural materials. Um, because he wants to go modular.
Let's go modular where?
On the North Gold Rush Lot. The, the employee housing piece. Yeah. He's just finished one over in, or just finishing up one.
He aware of the problems at the Justice Center at all?
Yeah, but he, um, but he, he just, he just did his own project over in Edwards. And, um, they got the boxes from a different place. They had maybe some of the similar problems. But, um, at any rate, there, um, he's very much interested in that because he thinks he can get his price point down. So for him, it works. And so he's asking for a waiver from the non-natural material, uh, provision, which would normally get him negative points. And the council seems acceptable probably to, to allowing that because usually these are like some composite material, which, you know, it may be good. We've had the debates here. It, we, it just, you know, some of it just hasn't, isn't like hardy board where we've seen enough of it where we're totally comfortable with it. So, um, that's another piece, um.
Hopefully it wouldn't be like what we saw over in Buena Vista.
Yeah. Um, they're going to need to put some temporary structures up. Um, I think up at parcel four, the, where the big hotel condo is going in to accommodate. Um.
Parking room?
Yeah, some of the things associated with the BOEC and Vail Resorts, they've got obligations to provide some of those. So unfortunately, there's going to, I don't know if it's going to be a sprung structure, but something like that. And we just got rid of all those up there finally. And it's a sensitive subject to the council. So I think there's some acceptance, but understanding there's going to be relatively short and when that happens. So because they, you know, those last ones went up and they stayed up for like twelve years or something like that. It's, you know, and you're like, oh, they'll be up for two years. Ended up being like twelve. Um, they, um, there's a possibility that if Mike, if, if, if for some reason the council and BGB can't agree on Entrada in terms of the annexation agreement deal points, that he might not get to the finish line there. So he'd have to go somewhere else to find that housing, to provide that hu- housing. And so the development agreement states that and the council wanted to make sure that's fine. We'll allow you to do that, but don't use Breck Terrace. So they had top wind before that there was a possibility under an older development agreement, excuse me, that, um, they could get an agreement with Vail to, um, deed restrict some of Vail's units and that would satisfy their, um, satisfy their, um, obligation.
Mark, let me ask you a question about Breck Terrace. Is the council not willing to push back against Vail to push them to redevelop that and increase the density? Because that to me seems like a no brainer.
Hasn't been discussed.
Because they could take down two or three of those buildings every two years, increase the density there and, and increase the density on that whole space and solve many of these problems. And Vail's got the money to do it.
And I have not heard that discussed, that, you know, that that's been a discussion point, something that we could talk about. Yeah, so. Um, uh, another point that came up was the way the development agreement was worded. Mike has always said, you get your dessert first. In other words, the first thing I'm going to do is build workforce housing. That being on the North Gold Rush Lot before I start building my stuff. But there wasn't any trigger in there that would prevent Mike from subdividing those lots and getting all the, you know, proceeds off those prior to doing any of the public benefits like the workforce housing. So.
Talking about the lots on parcel six.
Yes, yes. And parcel five, there's two there. It's, uh, but, um, so anyway, um, we, you know, I, I saw that as a.
My assumption is that on parcel five, there's not really any subdivision. It's just a recordation of the lots. Is that correct? Because they're part of the ski run now.
They, they'd have to go in and subdivide those two lots off. They're just, yeah, they're not.
They've subdivided from this, from the ski run, correct?
Subdiv- yeah, yeah, it's just part of the.
And record those as lots.
Yep, yep. Um, so, um, what, 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 what we've agreed to and what the council has agreed to is allowing him to subdivide but only be able to sell half of those lots. There's a recognition that he's going to need some sales in order to do all the infrastructure to put in a roundabout and to do the workforce housing and that. And so, um, what the council agreed to was allowing him to subdivide half of those lots. And we're not sure the exact mechanism we're going to use. If we're going to say, okay, this is your filing, your first filing, and then you're going to come back with a second filing after you've got a C O on your workforce housing in the roundabout. How that's going to work. But there's a limit to lots he can sell upfront. Um, so that's how that's been addressed. Um, and then let's see. Okay, so the Soul Center, part of his public benefits is given a contribution towards the Soul Center to complete that project. Uh, Mike generously came in and offered one point three million. And the council kept pushing him up and he ended up agreeing to two million. So it's, looks like it's likely to get to the finish line there with what he has committed to there. So I think the council was. That. So I think that's, that's a highlight of kind of the things that came up last week at the meeting, but, um, we're feeling like, uh, we're on good track here now. We'll come back. Um, our intention is to have a first reading on March twelfth and a second reading on March twenty sixth and then it would be approved at that point in time. We're just working through a few details.
Question on why we only require thirty five percent of, um, for employees.
That was, um.
For such a huge development.
That, that, okay, so that, that's a requirement or code right now. So, um, and it was a decision made by the town council at the time. Um, you, you know, you'll have these tables that say, okay, there's ten employees generated by every thousand square feet of restaurant space, for example. And so you need to provide, um, housing for those employees. However, pretty much how all these codes are written everywhere, it's a percentage of the total employees. It's not a hundred percent. So, um, we used to have our old provisions, which were pretty weak. It was like y- yeah, five percent maybe or so of employees. You know, if you wanted to avoid negative points, you, you provide the housing for five percent. So we bumped it up significantly to thirty five percent in these new requirements. There are a couple of communities like Aspen that are at like a sixty percent mitigation. And that's not off the table. It may be a discussion we have here, not too far down the road because we're going to come back. We just had a independent study done looking at our employee generation. Um, and, um, we're going to be discussing with the council in upcoming months. And it may be that we, one of the suggestions might be, let's change that formula and move it upwards. But right now, what they're required to do is just what anyone else would be required to do by our code.
And what's the total number of employees that they're supposed to house? Like, if you did a hundred percent? Hundreds of people, is it?
I don't know. I, I, I think it's, I, I think it's like a hundred employees at that, um, hotel condo.
And it's only for that hotel condo that's.
Only one that qualifies. Single family and duplexes are not part of the employee mitigation requirements.
But they certainly require employees.
Yeah, they do, uh, but they just didn't, uh.
Have you seen any studies that estimate like how many employees would be needed for all this stuff they're building? I mean, it's going to be massive. And to only provide thirty five percent of one property seems like it's putting a pretty big burden on our town.
Yeah, um, that's just the way our code's written at right now. I haven't seen a study that would look at it all because we're just looking at it what the code would require.
And these massive houses, are they going to be timeshares or individual?
Um, no, um, the. Um, no, um, the, the big houses that will be on these, um, single family lots, maximum size seventy five hundred square feet. And they cannot be STR'd, they'll be in zone three.
Okay.
Yep.
Mark, that seventy five hundred feet is that living space? Or inclusive of, of unfinished?
It's everything.
Everything. Another question, uh, what has been the public input into this project? Has there been any public comments, negative, positive, what has been the response of?
The only public input so far has been letters that have come to council. You know, some saying you should exact more from these guys, other like, these guys are great for the community, da, 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 and it's in. And, but what they have, the council has heard overwhelmingly, time and time again from many constituents is. We don't want to see anything happening on that North Gondola Lot. We just think there's too much happening downtown already and we don't want to see a circus down there.
As, as Dick said, it seems like we're getting to a win-win and I, it, it does seem that way to me.
Yeah, so that, so that, you know, that, I think that's the biggest message they've heard so far. When the development agreement starts on the twelfth, then they'll actually have public comments and we'll have people showing up then and we'll hear more.
I just can't wait five years and I'm with the people who buy those Timber Trail lots and. Hear the snowplows, I mean, they, uh, uh, the snow cats going every night.
They'll be completing DeVal Resorts, move them.
So, so I built a couple of houses on that.
Yeah.
On Timber Trail, and people always, not the buyers, but people always talk about that, it's not an issue.
It's not an issue?
It's not, because it's, it's only for a short period of time each night, very short period of time.
Okay, all right.
And they move on. And, and then the same thing with snowmaking, people go, but the snow making is on, actually, it's not very loud. Because I've worked there during the time and it's only for like five days of the year, so it's an odd issue.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, thank you, Ellie.
So, one more question, if we were, wanted to, if we wanted to hear, I've sat through a couple of those in the last year or so, but. Will the reading, the first and second reading in March. Summarize it, or is it just like, uh, a really quick reading and a vote? Is it worth attending that to learn more?
Read the whole thing, posted.
Yeah, the whole thing will be available. Um, we probably won't go into big details, but. The bottom line is there's a number of things that we're still working through, including some of the ones I just mentioned in terms of, we got to write the language for that. So it's going to be more than a normal reading, which usually is pretty, by the time it goes to first reading, it's. Pretty much on cruise control, this is going to take a little more discussion, at least the first reading.
And will that be in the afternoon work session or?
Yes, afternoon work session, but, excuse me, public comment won't be until the evening.
Thank you.
Yep.
But those work sessions in the afternoon will be open to the.
Yes.
To the public without comment.
Correct. Yep.
I'm adjourning the meeting.